All right, it's seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the July 9, 2019 Planning Board Meeting to order. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. And I'll introduce the other members. Down to my extreme left is Matt Sullivan. He's the Planning Director. Sitting next to me is Susan Replier, Planning Board Member. And then to my right, John Thurston, Peter Goodwin, and Brad Harriman, who is the Representative from the Board of Selectmen. We have one public hearing tonight. The applicant will make a presentation. During the presentation, the Planning Board Members will probably have questions and can ask those questions at that time. Once the applicant has completed the presentation, then Matt Sullivan, if he has some additional information that he feels the Planning Board Members need to consider, he'll make that presentation. Then we need to make a determination if the application is complete. If it is, I'll ask for a motion to accept the application as complete. If that passes, then I can open the public hearing. And any member of the public who wants to speak to the application will have an opportunity to do so. So, the first item, Welch Family Wolfboro Associates Limited Partnership. This is a boundary line adjustment, a reconfiguration of non-conforming lots, Tax Map 250-5 and 6. This is Case 2019-14. And this is for property on Claflin Lane.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, here representing the Welch Family Wolfboro Associates Limited Partnership in their application for a boundary line adjustment through the reconfiguration of existing non-conforming lots. Section of the zoning ordinance, Article Roman 7, Section 175-55C. The two lots involved are Tax Map 250 Lot 5, which is this smaller lot right here that's outlined in red, and 250 Lot 6, which is this one outlined in green, which is very strange in that it goes around this lot, which is 254, has all the waterfrontage and then out around like so.
But neither of the lots have waterfrontage. The lots?
The large lot has 477 feet of waterfrontage. These two lots do not have any waterfrontage.
Right, okay.
This interior lot is not involved in the boundary line adjustment. It's only this green lot that wraps around this red lot.
Okay, thank you.
These lots were originally created in 1992, when Wolfboro had an open space preservation option. Tax Map 250 Lot 5, the smaller one, that has no frontage on the road and it has no waterfrontage. But because of its proximity to the lake, it lies wholly within the shorefront residential district. It is 0.5 acres in size. 250 Lot 6, the larger lot, has no road frontage, but it does have 477 feet along Lake Winnipesaukee when measured by the shore. Both lots are served by town sewer and town water. And the proposal is to reconfigure the lot lines to accommodate an addition for two bedrooms and a bathroom that they want to add to this existing structure. And the addition would be right here. Because this is a lot that has no waterfrontage, its side yard setbacks are 10 feet, because it has from 0 to 75 feet of frontage on the lake. The total land area that's proposed to be exchanged is in three separate areas, in yellow here, a little tiny piece here and here. The total exchange is only 930 square feet. The only odd wrinkle to it is this large green lot presently does not comply with the form factor. I know that Matt believes that the form factor is applicable, and so we've submitted a waiver from Article Roman 6, Section 175-532B, which allows the Planning Board to grant relief to the form factor if they feel that it is in keeping in harmony with the neighborhood and -- just grab the other criteria -- that it's in harmony with the adjacent lots in the neighborhood and that it's consistent with sound planning practices. Since this property that was developed, and presently the green lot does not conform with the form factor, the existing form factor is 58.3. Afterwards, it would be 59.5. So it's slightly more than a 1. It goes from 58 to 59 essentially. The Romney properties that you approved a boundary line adjustment last year on, those also were developed originally in the open space preservation, some of those. Those did not conform. So it's consistent with some of the development in the neighborhood.
Can you speak to why we should grant the waiver? Are you going to do that?
Yeah, I was just going to say because I feel that it is consistent with what's the development that's gone on in the neighborhood. And in order to allow for this small addition, grant them the area that they need, I don't think it materially changes the existing conditions. Probably if, other than somebody being aware of this application, no one would notice the difference if they looked at the two plans independent of each other. So I think that it's still essentially keeping with almost the exact same way it is now.
So you're looking to adjust the lot line of the middle piece there, just moving it up?
So what we're doing is we're taking from the green piece, we're taking, and I've given you a colored version reduced there, but you're getting a small triangle here that's being added to the red lot. There's a triangle here that's being subtracted from the red lot. And then there's also another small triangle here that's being taken from the red lot and added to the green. They're both 930 square feet. These two tables here and here show you the areas A, B, and C, and what's being added and subtracted.
And what is the reason again?
They would like to add two bedrooms to this structure. And there's no room for that addition without putting the addition in front of windows and doors on the existing structure.
What is the nature of the land to the northeast of that area C?
It's fairly level upland. It's not--
That's not wetland or--
No, no, there's no wetland there in that area. It gets wetter over here, off of the property, down in -- the Kingswood Golf Course owns this strip down in here that comes down, and it gets wetter over in this area.
Any other questions?
What's the septic system status?
It's town sewer, town water. I think the town planner had a note in here asking for a waiver, but it -- because of--
Yeah, Jim, I'm remembering why I put that in. Because in your letter, you had said, I think I misunderstood this. In your letter, you had said that you were hereby requesting--
A waiver of this.
A waiver, essentially saying it's not -- you were saying it's not applicable to the case.
Right, it was not applicable, but the regulations said--
Understood.
And then I think at TRC, I submitted this the day before TRC, and at TRC, you might have made the comment, well, if it's town sewer and town water, it's not needed.
Yeah, and I would stand behind that comment. Hiss mapping, in my opinion, is not necessary for town sewer and water project that's existing as is today.
No, but it's relative to the setback. Gives him a 10-foot setback instead of a 20 if he was on his own sewer, right?
No, because this lot is in the shorefront residential district, so the setbacks are changed by the amount of shore frontage, not necessarily on the availability of town sewer and water. Whereas, looking at the larger parcel, if you went further up that parcel, you would be impacted by access to water and sewer, but not the proposed addition area that's shown on the plan that you have.
Okay, Matt, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No additional comments. The only thing I would add is that the one difference between this and the Romney case is that, yeah, you did not choose to formally grant a waiver for the form factor on that because it was more nearly conforming, as I recall. Whereas, in this case, it is not. So I recommend that you do formally grant the waiver if you feel it's appropriate. And just one note on that. That waiver for the form factor also implies that you're ensuring the environmental integrity. I think because this is an equal swap of open space land, that condition is satisfied under that ordinance. So I think, at the risk of sort of advocating for the waiver, I think it's appropriate here, based on the type of subdivision that's here.
Right, okay.
Other comments to add?
Okay, anything else? Then the applicant has provided some justification for the waiver of the lot shape. And so I entertain a motion that we grant the waiver based on the testimony that we received and the fact that this is a small request, that the lot would be in harmony with other lots in the neighborhood. And as Matt just mentioned, it would ensure the environmental integrity of the site. Somebody could make a motion to that effect to grant the waiver.
I'm moved.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, anything else you wanted to add?
I'm happy to answer questions the board of the public has.
Yeah, okay. All right, then with the granting of the waiver, the application is now considered complete. And someone would make a motion to accept this application as complete?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so I'll open the public hearing now. If anyone wants to speak to this application or ask any questions, now would be the time to do that. Okay, all right. Matt--
One bit of discussion on the, you know, the life of the other piece. Would we grant another waiver on that property where we just gave them an exception for the form factor? Would they be able to bite off that property again and--
So basically to return to what exists today?
No, to -- it doesn't conform to the form factor. So if they wanted to change the interior lot and take away from that outside lot that wasn't conforming to the form factor, would we grant that? It's hypothetical, but I'm just trying to look at what we're setting for precedent and where we're going to go forward here. Will we--
I don't think the -- I guess I can't speak to the form factor. I would, I think the one thing I can say though, John, is that if this application were proposing only the removal of Area C from the open space lot, it would be a very different application, I think. It would be then a subdivision that would be reducing the size of an open space parcel that was created under an old ordinance. And I think it would be a very different level of review. Because it's an equal swap of two open space areas right now, I don't think it's an issue. And I think that the form factor of the existing lot was just so odd when it was created because of the regulations that were in place. As you can see from it, it's such an odd hook-shaped thing. I don't think we're creating a precedent that's too dangerous here for form factor waivers. I think this is actually kind of exactly why that waiver provision exists, because it doesn't impact the neighborhood. It's not impacting the lake in any way because we're not really increasing the development capacity a lot. And certainly not creating any lots out of it. So it doesn't worry me too much, if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Right, and it's really the formula that was -- I mean, it was an equal swap. So it was just the way the formula turned out that made it more--
That's exactly right. I think had that line been drawn a bit differently, we may be having a more nearly conforming form factor on the lot potentially.
Yeah, I looked at it. I think that because you have to go in and out--
There's no way to decrease, yeah.
Yeah, shortest distances between two points is a straight line. So we automatically lengthen it, which increases the form factor.
Right.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and to Matt's point, because that area was dedicated as active open space, we felt the same as Matt, that you couldn't really reduce that because that would jeopardize the original approval, which dedicated a certain amount of active open space to be allowed to make these smaller lots, so.
Right. Okay, if there are no other questions, then Matt, you have some conditions for us to consider?
Yes, I have four conditions for the board to consider. All standard conditions for a boundary line adjustment or reconfiguration of this nature. The first being the incorporation of the plans as dated to this approval, that being the boundary line adjustment/reconfiguration of non-conforming lots plan for Welch Family Wolfboro Associates. Condition two being the applicant shall be responsible for monumentation, the submission of a certificate of monumentation, updated plans. Condition three being the submission of a Mylar Plan at the Carroll County Registry of Deeds, and submission of all recording fees. And then condition four being the incorporation of all the materials submitted within the application package as part of the approval this evening.
Okay, anyone want to add any other conditions or discuss the conditions? And then I'll close the public hearing. And it seems that this application is straightforward. And so if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the boundary line adjustment.
I move to approve the boundary line adjustment with the restrictions indicated.
Thank you. Motion has been made and how about a second?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the application's approved. Thank you very much, and have a nice trip. Okay, Matt, did you want to tell us anything about the lot merger?
I do. Can I just ask you a quick question on this, though? Do you have anything in your packet beyond my memo? Do you have the merger documentation itself? This is all I have in my packet. I just want to make sure that you did get everything. If not, I'll pass the folder along. It's a relatively--
We just got--
Yep, I'm just going to send this along then. I'm not sure what happened there. I'm going to send this blue folder along. This is the deed information associated for the lot merger. This is a lot merger of two lots on--
Okay, yeah, sorry. Let me just read it into the record.
Okay.
Okay. This is a lot merger, Daniel and Karen Helgerson, Tax Map 190-59 and 190-60 at 9 and 11 Park Avenue. And one of the lots is a vacant lot?
That's correct. And one of the lots is a developed lot. Lots 59 and 60, and the files make its way down your way that has the deed information in it. This is for 9 and 11 Park Avenue. As you can see from the aerial image I included there, it looks like the current owner, Daniel S. and Karen J. Helgerson, they're storing, it looks like a boat on the lot with two kayaks. And in that sense, actually, this does address a nonconformity. Our ordinance does comment a bit on storage of materials off-site where there isn't a dwelling. So we are addressing a nonconformity there. Lot 60 is otherwise vacant, though. So this is really the merger of lots 59 and 60 into a lot of approximately 0.41 acres in size. It doesn't exacerbate or create any nonconformity, and therefore, I would recommend the board approve the lot merger as proposed on Park Avenue.
And this is a, what's the required lot size?
One acre.
One acre.
So it does not comply with a lot size, but it does comply with, actually, it doesn't comply with road frontage either, I'm sorry, but it further increases the conformity of it.
Yeah, right. It becomes more conforming, okay. Anyone have any issues with this?
No, it's just a residential lot.
Yeah.
They can have their kayaks on it, can't they?
The ordinance is a little tricky. The kayaks are fine, kayaks are fine. It's when you park a boat, technically, the ordinance says storage of equipment on other lots where there isn't a dwelling. You're technically not supposed to do that. But, I mean, just so everybody knows from an enforcement perspective, it has to be a patterned history of doing that. I mean, for example, if somebody stored their RV on some lot and we noticed it for a long period of time, that would be kind of what we're looking for. This is not really what the ordinance talks about, but it could be interpreted that way.
Well, is an RV or a boat equipment?
So it actually says personal storage of vehicles or other-- yeah, so it's pretty broad. It doesn't say equipment specifically. I can actually read you the language if you'd like.
You don't have to read it, it's fine.
This is not one of those sections of the ordinance that we do a lot of enforcement on because everybody has got things stored on lots that might not have dwelling units because a lot of folks own vacant lots. It's outdoor storage of personal property on residential lots, provided that it's on the same lot as the dwelling unit. That's allowed. So basically, if you're storing items outside of personal property on a lot that doesn't have a house, you're technically violating the zoning ordinance.
So this is helping, conforming them?
This is helping, but it's also, I shouldn't have even brought it up. I regret it now. I regret it.
Well, actually, there was a question.
It is a non-issue, so it just, I shouldn't have even brought it up. So I think it's a relatively straightforward merger. It's just, I think, I think they have some plans to potentially expand.
And it will bring it into conformance.
You're definitely bringing it further into conformance, yeah. It's a very simple one.
I would move to accept the merger. I would second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, great.
All right. I just need to not say anything sometime. I don't know why I did it, anyway.
Okay, let's see. Well, I skipped over public comment because there's no member of the public here. So no communications and on to the work session. First item is the South Wolfboro. Oh, yeah, do you want to--
Do people want to move tables, or do we want to? Does it make it easier?
It is easier.
Okay, we can do that. The only thing I'd say is I'm asking, we'll keep the mics on the tables. Peter's recording for us because Kathy's in here. So can we, do you want to put the tables together real quick? First item on the agenda is the--
Matt gave us a very nice board map.
It's just a zoning map, nothing too fancy there.
And a list of the properties and their use.
That's correct. So at the last meeting, we had talked about South Wolfboro. And it is a little bit tricky to see here, so we can walk through what these properties are on here. But we wanted to get a sense of what the proximity was of the South Wolfboro District to the shorefront residential district, and also get a sense of what the history is of some of these properties. So I did prepare a zoning approval table for you that indicates for all of the lots, or maybe not all of the lots, but certainly the lots within close proximity or those that are commercial, that are in the residential district, what the history is of those. We had talked at the last meeting, as you look at this, of including lots, potentially 77 and 78, which are in the bottom right-hand corner there, which is the cider press and the cottages. We had talked about including those two lots as part of the South Wolfboro Limited Business District, and potentially even a portion of Lot 66 and I believe 65, and someone can correct me on that. But I want to give you a sense of really what the history is here so we can get a better, really make the right decision about whether or not it makes sense to zone these properties commercial, whether the existing commercial zoning will actually help them. That's why I've included the zoning district information, and how you want to proceed with this. So I don't want to constrain the conversation. It's up to what you all want to do, but I think really--
Can I just ask a question? Okay, so if we were to rezone, we wouldn't be touching the shorefront.
You wouldn't be--
We have to--
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. You wouldn't be touching the shorefront.
Right, so Lot 77 is two-thirds shorefront.
That's right.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So what do you mean by your question, we wouldn't be touching the--
We wouldn't be--
I see the ring around 77, yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't be rezoning. We wouldn't be changing the zoning of the shorefront.
No, but I think--
We wouldn't be able to make a marina there or something like that.
What I'm thinking, though, is that we really are talking about that portion right there. Sorry, that portion right there in the black that I just kind of highlighted, that's what I think would be rezoned commercially. I think for the cabins, it doesn't help a whole lot. They're still in the shorefront district. It does help certainly more for cider press. But again, we come back to this issue of the fact that the South Wolfboro District doesn't allow restaurants as a permitted use or as a special exception use, so.
Cider press, right now, because it's nonconforming, can expand by 25%.
They can, yeah, they can.
25% of the building and 25% of the use.
Correct.
Okay.
They--
So they already have some benefits. And I think that's, when we had that, the meeting with the hotel people--
Yeah.
I mean, that was one of the things that we brought up, that a lot of them are nonconforming, but we do have some potential benefits already in our zoning ordinance for those nonconforming--
Yeah.
--restaurants and motels and residential zones.
They are currently going through a development process down there. They're doing some renovation. We've actually talked to them. I don't think--
Cider press?
Yeah, and I don't think they have interest in changing right now, but--
What I see as the benefit, Kathy, is if somebody wants to do something and expand, we have stormwater regulations that they're going to improve the parking lots and all that stuff down there. That's what I see as being a benefit by giving them the ability to have this legally zoned.
I'm not sure that, I mean, they would have to do stormwater and everything if they expanded.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, so if they, let's say they do--
It's a nonconforming use.
Let's say they double their building size down there. They want to double what they want to do. They're going to double their parking lot. You would have to conform fully with the stormwater management regulations for at least the upgraded portion of that lot, if not the whole entire lot.
Yeah, but 20, I'm just saying, I know the size of the building. It's pretty small. If 25% is not much--
No, it's not.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you're giving them the ability to get bigger than 25% and create stormwater regulations because 25% to that building is not very much. They wouldn't even be making more--
Another five tables.
I mean, yeah, and another four parking spots. You know what I'm saying? Not 20 parking spots or not 10.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, 25% is not much.
Yeah.
Not much. I don't--
Not to say that that won't--
Well, it depends upon whether you're talking about habitable area or coverage.
I would treat it as if the restaurant use is the nonconformity, it would be restaurant area that they're expanding. So if they have 1,000 square feet of restaurant area, they could add 250 feet of restaurant area. So that would be how I'd interpret the nonconformity.
Okay, but they may not be able to expand much more, even with the 50% lot coverage.
No, we don't, we don't, I don't even think that they do want to expand right now. I don't think that's something they're contemplating. don't think that's something they're contemplating, but the question would be, could they? Could they?
And, and it's not them, it's the next person also.
Yep, just curious.
Yep, that's a good question. And, yeah, Kathy, I think, I think what you were about to say is, they are going to be constrained pretty quickly here by the lot coverage, just because of where they are.
Right, with the parking, because it's, it's pretty much all building and parking lot.
Yeah.
In the, the area that's in, in the green.
Right. I think they could do, they could do a modest addition. They could probably go above the 25% and still meet the lot coverage, but it's, it's not going to be a huge expansion. That's, that's for sure. So, I think that the zoning does constrain them a bit. Certainly doesn't allow them to go above that 25% again, but I, I don't, I don't know how the board feels. I don't know if you want to relax the zoning.
They have requested?
Nope.
They have not requested?
This is just a conversation item, yeah, I mean, we, we were looking at...
They're operating a business there.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, that's...
By exception or by waiver?
It is by.
It's been there, it's been there for years.
Old jerky days.
That's right.
Yeah.
79, expansion to restaurant.
Yeah, so in 79, it was granted an expansion to a restaurant, so it's not...
But it was a restaurant before.
Before. So it's, it's definitely, it's a mix of grandfathering, and then a variance, which is, you know, basically runs with the land. So it's a little mixed there.
But, again, I, I think back to the old days. You've got all these little camps and cottages all down there. They all used to congregate at this one place and have dinner. It's like, it's, you know, it's, you, you're adding a little community to the area down there, where things can be beneficial to the rest of the neighbors also, by keeping a restaurant in that neighborhood and kind of, you know, it's, it's cute.
So are you saying it should be converted?
No, I would, I would, I would like to see that be a conforming use down there.
But changing the zone isn't going to do that.
Changing the zone would not, would alone not do that, but changing the zone and changing the permitted uses in the zone would.
And also, we'd have to change the purpose. I mean, it's kind of a significant...
Narrow, yep, yep.
Change.
Yep. Yeah.
Because the, the purpose is professional business, limited retail, and residential uses.
So it's lacking.
Right.
Yeah.
Question, Matt, is the percent lot coverage under this would be 50%. Is it different now, the way it's set up now, or is it still 50%?
It'd still be the 50%.
Okay, that's, that doesn't change.
Yep.
So are we wondering whether we should add restaurant as first?
No, all I'm saying is that you'd have to.
Yeah, I think, so if we...
You'd have to change the purpose and the uses.
It's there anyway. But are we worried about what might happen in the future?
That's, that's the question.
If it lasts this for a year, it's gone, technically.
Not if you add it as a permitted use, though.
Okay.
So if you add it as a permitted use, they would then be able to expand as the lot allows, and maintain the property as a restaurant use until the zoning changes at a later time.
Okay, so that's the first step.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a good question about, and we talked about this, I mean, what if, where the accountants were, that was converted into a restaurant? Would, would you actually want that there?
Accountant's building in the...
On the corner.
No, I wish the state would have bought that, but...
Right. Yeah, I mean, that, but that would be, it does, do restaurants actually make sense throughout this zone?
Well, that's a whole different...
No, it isn't.
No, it's all in the red.
It could go anywhere.
Yeah, it could go anyplace. So if we, if we allow, if we expand the zone here, and then allow restaurants, we would then be saying, anywhere within the red, you can have a restaurant.
What about a use by special exception, and then that would still allow all the other ones to do it this, also?
I mean, the, the traffic flow down there is bad enough at the corner, so I don't, you know, if you had a restaurant which went into Western Autobody.
I don't think anyone in their right mind would put a restaurant where that accountant would...
There are a lot of people who...
Yeah, entrepreneurs, yeah, entrepreneurs. Valid comment.
Aside from the restaurant, are there any other parcels outside of the zone on maybe the northern side, or on the southern side potentially, that you'd want to see included in the commercial zoning? I'm not sure that I see any, personally.
I don't, no. I went right through one by one. You know, there was a denial of a vet place there on 50, was it 52 there at one point in time, yeah.
East of Suez?
That's a different area, Peter. It's okay. Yeah, there, there really aren't any patterned commercial uses outside of the red area. It's really the restaurant. It's really what we're, what we're looking at.
Well, if that's there by grandfathering and every other way, it's an existing structure, so therefore, it can make, remain. And so should we really worry about it?
Well, we need to worry about it in the, if, we want them to keep, keep in operation.
Right, but if they want to keep there, and they want to expand by 25%, that's okay. But we don't want to have more things, more restaurants in that area, which are going to cause trouble with traffic.
And I, I think, one of the good things is, if you ultimately decide that, you've looked at it at least, you've looked at the zone, and this is exactly what we wanted to do with a lot of nonconforming businesses, kind of started doing this around town.
Right.
Yep. No, I agree. I, I'm, I'm torn a little bit, but again, I don't, I don't want to see the devil pop up in other places, so...
And hey, maybe in the future, they say, "We really want to do this, what can you do?" And then they come talk to, yeah, and then you can talk about...
They haven't approached us.
No, there hasn't been any interest. I think it was just...
Sorry, new owners there?
Um, yes. Yep, new owners.
They have not approached for anything.
No, I don't think they're...
Well, no, they've been in to talk about renovating.
Renovation, but nothing, nothing about expansion, or anything of that, of that type. Yeah, I, I think they know it's not a commercially zoned area, though. They're well aware of that, but...
So, does that mean we're going to expand the red area up to the cider press, and is that part of it, or?
I think we're saying that we're not, we're not doing that.
Can expand by 25%, and they're not even asking to do that.
Yeah.
And their lot coverage is high already.
I mean, we shouldn't be changing zoning, because somebody wants to do something.
No.
They haven't even asked.
Right, right.
Therefore, we're, you know...
We're good.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and we had said to, at the hotel meeting, that we would talk to people about issues that they might have, and see how we could resolve.
Yep, and, and what I can, what I can do, just to make sure, I can talk to the owners and, and check and see if they have any interest. I mean, I don't have any problem asking.
I would wait for them to come to you, and then propagate their own ideas.
Okay, I'm good with that. Okay.
Okay, this is good.
I believe it.
I'll leave that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, no, and Terry helped me out with this, too, so not, not just me.
You know, lacking a site visit, better pictures.
Yeah, I will, I will try. And I almost actually printed, I almost actually printed the actual Google images and everything.
Probably, when we're talking about rezoning areas, we probably should do a site visit.
I thought about that in Wolfboro Falls.
Investigation.
But everybody drives through that particular area.
No, I'm just saying, make it a general...
Yeah, Wolf...
Site visits are super helpful.
Yeah, Wolfboro Falls would have been a good one, because we were concerned with pedestrian traffic, and the danger of the curve, and, you know, it, I know everyone drives through there, but it could have been helpful.
So if, if somebody wanted to open Frank's Variety again...
Where's that, John? Sorry.
One or two up from Western Autobody.
One or two up from Western Autobody, in that red building there.
You mean with the doctor's office?
Yeah, it's Dr. Lewis, yeah, yeah. That was Frank's Variety there before that.
So we're going up Middleton Road on the, okay, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's, there's, there's no chance, or is it? No.
Nope. Uh, wait, wait, wait.
Well, there's...
Better not comment, yeah.
It's in there.
There's limited...
Two buildings up?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it is...
Is it one of these?
It is in the district.
Yeah, so...
And it says, "Limited retail."
One of these two right here.
So, yes.
Maybe it is, maybe it's 74.
So the problem is that this is...
I think it is 74.
Okay.
First one, yeah.
Okay. Problem is, I'm not sure the retail is allowed.
Yeah, right. Well, when you read the permitted use, it's...
It doesn't really seem like retail's allowed.
Could have an antique shop there.
Yeah, that's a whole other issue. Yeah, so I don't, I think that if someone came in with that, I don't think they could do it. I don't think they could do it.
If they could have a doctor's office again, like the doctor had there, or, I mean, what do we, I mean, it's a, it's almost a vacant spot. I mean, the person could be listening right now, thinking, you know, "I'd really like to find something that somebody would like to do with that." I don't know, it's...
Yeah, I mean, the business services, professional offices, personal services, you could have a doctor's, you could have a doctor's office there.
Well, there was.
It was.
There was, so you could do that again. Bed and breakfast, artisan studio, which we obviously have. Yeah, retail will be a tough one. That'd be a tough one. So, anyone's listening at home that wants to do that...
That goes to the little theme of the neighborhood, you know? You got a little store down the street to buy the bug spray, you know, get the, get the stuff, you know?
And honestly, what it's, the purpose, the purpose of it is pretty dead-on. The purpose is for reuse and redevelopment of an old village center. That's exactly what you're saying. It's really supposed to, that's what we're supposed to have here. It is tough, though, just because of the way cars move for, through there, you know, it's...
Everybody know where Steve Davis had his, his office machine?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, before then, Pinky Shea had a little shop. And it was, it's a cute little, it's a nice little house, and then the shop was right in the front, where he had his offices. So I, I mean, it's in that zone. And I'm not sure how she got approval to do it, but did it. And then, and then he changed to office machines, so...
I don't know.
Again, I just think of that whole little theme of the camps and everything in the neighborhood there, and you've got to like, think about the old days, and that's what it is. It's, it's the resort area.
Well, Western Autobody is still there.
I get it.
To the old days.
How long has that been there?
Long time, Frank York, yeah.
Huh.
Okay, so...
40s, yeah.
40s?
40s.
That's cool. Wow. Anyway, okay, so we're...
As long as the restaurant.
Yeah.
So we're, we're kind of tabling this for, for now. Okay. Talked about it, good, great.
Okay, the revised Pine Hill Road?
Yep. Pine Hill Road revision, incorporated the edits from the last meeting. Unless you have any comments, I would kind of recommend that you table this for further review, a little later in the zoning season. Did make some minor tweaks to that definition for light industry. And then just made the minor changes regarding, there was some reordering that was honestly the most substantial thing. It wasn't, it was really, really minor. And then just making sure that the buffers and everything were formatted the right way. And I, I don't have any comments beyond that. I think this reflects our discussion in full. When we get to this during the zoning season, I'm going to give you back the minutes of the meeting where we initially discussed this, because that's really where we talked about why we're doing it, and I think it'll be good to kind of refresh ourselves on it, because zoning season is, you know, five months away, functionally, or four months away, so it'll be a little down the road.
Okay, so on, on this one, we're going to have a meeting for a, a public meeting.
Yep. Like property, you mean, yeah. Yeah, I, I would recommend what we did on the other amendment, which was notify all the people in the zone, let them know that this is happening. We got one person at that meeting, the weather was bad, I'm pretty sure, maybe it wasn't bad, I can't remember that night, but I think we should invite everybody in to talk about it, if, if that's what the board wants to do, or...
So we didn't get much reaction in the first meeting. We got more reaction on the second meeting, when we brought it up, to put it on the warrant.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. No, I know.
And that was really, personally, I believe that was really on the petition, not on yours, but yours was lumped in with it. So I don't think that...
It was collateral damage.
Yeah, I don't think that, and, and the other piece here is that if the same folks show up, this is, I don't believe that this is more impactful to, to them at all, particularly in the Taylor Home. We're not proposing a zoning district boundary change. We are, we're actually kind of restricting industry more by allowing only light industry. At the same time, we're also allowing for a little more contractor storage yard within the zone. Of course, today, I believe it's a win-win, but I'm, I'll probably feel differently in November after a meeting, but I think this will work for everybody.
But Matt, did send, send it to Mary DeVries, who was at our meeting?
And Mary, yeah. Mary has subsequently sent that out in a chamber email that she CC'd me on, so it has gone out to people that, because I sent her a link to the meeting, actually.
Oh, okay.
The tape itself, so...
How long ago do you think that was?
A week ago that he sent it.
Oh, no, I think it may have been...
You haven't gotten, you haven't gotten any feedback then, yet, basically?
No, and, and actually, I should make you aware, too. She requested something that was part of the packet, just so you know. It was the prior amendment to this, and I provided it to her. It was part of the planning board's packet. It's in our public folder. But I did make it very clear to her that there was going to be a new amendment, and that I would send this to her as well. She wanted the actual text, and I'm sure she might share it with the chamber, and that's, that's good, I think. So I did share this draft language with her, just so you know. But I don't think you need to take any formal action, but just remember that it'll be on the work plan. We'll come back to it in October, November to review.
She wasn't referencing the old, the dead on arrival.
No, she was referencing the one that she was in attendance for, where we kind of talked about this. Yeah, she wanted to get a copy of it. And I think I had, I invited her to that meeting. That's why she was there that evening, because she had said, "I want to be there." I said, "Great, come on in."
It was a good meeting.
It was good.
It was a really good meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, proposed amendment to habitable space definition.
These are, the next two items are two new items that I, I need to give further thought to, but I want to just introduce the ideas to you. These are both coming from Code Enforcement Department on habitable, I'll start with habitable space. An amendment was made back in 20, 2009, to the habitable space definition, to allow bathrooms in accessory structures, detached structures. You may remember this.
That was from Montrone.
Yeah. So it was well-intended, I think, at the time. I need to dig into the history a little bit, find out a little bit more about why it happened. I think it was well-intended.
From my recollection, was that if somebody's at their home, and they're working in their garage, why should they be able to, not be able to use the bathroom, and they have to run back into their house to use the bathroom?
Right.
And I think that that, if you ask me today whether I think that should be allowed, I think it should be. The problem is that what we're seeing is people putting bathrooms in accessory structures, and they are then converting it to maybe not technically habitable space, but something that looks a whole lot like bedrooms. And I think that the benefit to the, the guy who wants to work in his workshop is less important, frankly, than the potential impact of having these functional accessory dwelling units that we're seeing on properties. I'm going to give you a more full proposal on this, but I've just sort of taken a crack at it.
But isn't there a hitcher there, that you can have a kitchen in the...
There is, there is, but what we're concerned about is septic loading, when you've got functional bedrooms in another, do you know what I mean? You're creating functional bedrooms.
But that would trigger, you would, that would trigger a clampdown right away, if you knew they didn't have a septic and they had an extra bedroom. Doesn't that, have a violation?
So here, here's what's happening, though. So we're going in to inspect these structures, and there's nothing in there at the time. We're then seeing pictures or other things, where they're putting beds in there, people are sleeping in there. And we recognize that we're never going to stop that, right? But I think what we can do is, we can prevent them from being rented.
I've seen them on Airbnb, garage.
Yep. We can prevent them from being rented by taking the bathroom out. And I, I recognize why this was done initially, but I think that Airbnb is further exposing some of these situations, where these spaces have been expanded. So I'll bring you a full, full proposal on this, but I just want to give you a heads up that Cory came into my office the other day and said, "I just, I can't look at any more of these. I'm worried about them. They're being converted." I just, I can't look at any more of these. I'm worried about them. They're being converted. And we are, we don't really have an opportunity to go back in once the final certificate of completion is granted. So, it's basically what we're seeing online or what people are sending to us. So, that's sort of where we're at with this particular recommendation.
Or shower, say-
So, the amendment that I proposed is just removing bathrooms and toilet rooms from accessory structures.
And that will prevent these new bangled Airbnb pockets from-
I think, I think it would help.
It's a, it's a necessity.
Right, right. If you're not going to stay at someplace that doesn't have a bathroom. That said, we're never going to stop somebody that rents an Airbnb that has a shared bathroom inside the house. You know what I mean? Like that's, if someone does that, we can't stop it.
But this is a-
I think this is a huge way to clip this.
It's probably necessary.
So, I'll bring a, I'll bring a more detailed report of what the problem is, a little history on what, why this was adopted. Because again, well-intended, totally get it. I'd want a bathroom in my barn too, but I think this needs to be rethought based on Airbnb and what we're seeing there. Okay?
Is there any thought that we would change our zoning or ordinances associated with Airbnb and short-term rentals, such as what Laconia has recently done? I think it was Laconia, or is it?
Well, I was going to ask if we should-
Want me to talk about that?
Issue now, because-
Let's do it. We have seen a, an increase in Airbnb complaints this year that at least doubles what we heard last year. And-
Complaints from who?
From abutters particularly, to units that are being rented, some from associations that are dealing with the issues where their homes are being rented on Airbnb. And my position has been that Airbnbs are not, are a permitted use, because Airbnb is not by itself a specific use of a property. Airbnb is a system, just like VRBO and HomeAway, to do something that has been done around the lakes for a hundred years. It makes it more publicly accessible. It makes it more visible for a lot of people. And that has made it easier to book many of these places. But to me, the use itself by nature is not a non-permitted use.
It's just happening a lot more often.
It's just happening a lot more often. And I mentioned to Kathy, I emailed the town of Meredith on Friday last week about this. Because I know that they are looking at the issue. An hour and a half long conversation with their planning director. They are in the very same position that we're in. They recognize that it's a critical piece of their economy, that taxpayers are using it to cover their taxes for the year. They are establishing a committee to look at the issue, but they are, they do not think it's feasible for communities even like Laconia and Portsmouth and Durham to regulate these effectively. And they don't necessarily think that they should be regulating them. What they are seeing and what we are hearing in the complaints that we're getting downstairs are nuisance and bad behavior complaints. It's people-
Putting off fireworks in the front yard.
Drinking, drinking, and being loud.
We have an authority for that.
That's exactly right.
We have an authority, the police?
The police. And, and they are-
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
That's not his job.
No, it's not.
And that, but that's really what we're hearing. We are not hearing land use related issues. I mean, the, the closest thing we've gotten, noise, not, not even that. The closest thing we've, the closest thing we've gotten to a land use related issue is somebody says, I'm concerned about the occupancy. Well, we don't have an occupancy cap. Neither does Meredith. There's nothing that says, and nor, nor would I advocate for, if you have five kids sleeping in a bedroom, are we going to shut down properties? No, it's something that's been happening for, for forever.
It's a resort. It's been a resort.
Exactly. So, I'm not trying to make the Airbnb complaints non-legitimate. I just think that we're really talking about bad behavior and not the use itself.
Yeah, no, I've, I've-
Is it, is it though, something that historically, all those rentals have basically been a week-long segment? And is it something that we would end up saying that you wouldn't be able to rent for two days, or two nights, or three nights?
But you still have to regulate that and be there to-
So, it's a great question, and that's how a lot of communities are going about it, Peter. But again, my question would be, why would we do that if the issue that we're trying to address is an issue of behavior and not length of stay? No, no, these are, these are, and I, these are excellent questions. And I, I've been like racking my brain, because last Tuesday and Wednesday, I got more complaints than I've ever gotten. And I, and honestly, last year, yeah, and last year, I got none, and I was shocked.
July, everybody's all booked up. They're all here on vacation.
And actually, I should be clear, they weren't necessarily complaints. They were questions about what's the town's policy. And, and I, they, most people were really pleasant about it, and they understand that, and I give them the same, I gave them the same spiel. I refined it, you know, to what I just told you, or maybe not refined it. But this is why I tell people, they understand that we're not taking a position on it right now. But-
Someone needs to, though.
Well, maybe.
For what reason?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I don't know. I don't know.
I don't want to, I mean, I rent my house out on Airbnb.
Oh, we're going to shut you down. No, I'm just kidding. No, no, yeah.
You know, as, as helpful as it is to me and my personal financial situation, I have week, seven-night minimums. So, I rent my house in its entirety. I have to leave. It helps me do home maintenance. Because I don't have a lot of extra money. So, I depend on it. But at the same time, I don't want jerks in there bothering my neighbors.
Right.
At all. That would be very upsetting to me. So, I do think if it's not us, it would be great if someone else could be keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, and this, and, and a lot of communities are saying that. They're sort of counting on the state or other communities to come up with a model for this. And I, I certainly am doing the same thing. I think that's exactly what we should do.
I mean, I vet people very thoroughly.
Yeah, and I would, this is kind of where like the free market media is coming out. I think that property owners should do that. And if there are issues, then property owner deals with the issue.
This is the how, why Airbnb works, is that there's a review process online. Nobody wants a bad review. Nobody.
Right.
So, most of the time, it works great.
Yeah.
Nobody wants a bad review.
Right.
Because the host gets to review the guest, and the guest gets to review the host. It works both ways. That's why it works so well.
Yeah. I, I think we, we should, so I guess my, the-
You could get bad renters if you rented by the month, and you never get rid of them. I'm well versed in it.
Yes.
Similar.
So, I think what we should do is, I've, I've talked to John over in Meredith. They have, they're putting together this committee. They have both advocates and opposition on it. It's great. I'm going to watch what they're doing. I may even try and attend a meeting potentially to kind of hear what they're talking about. I think that's the closest model for us. I don't think we can be looking at communities like Portsmouth or Laconia, because they're just, it's, it's a different problem there in a lot of ways. Maybe some of their ordinance we should, we should copy. But I, where was I going with this? Oh, the, the last thing I wanted to say is that what we are also hearing is that associations are beginning to talk about bylaw restrictions on these. And, and some I think we're going to see in the next two or three months.
And they have that right.
Absolutely.
And that's the way they can regulate it.
And I am totally promoting them to do that. And I've said, hey, if, once you do that, send me that, because then I can share that with other people who want to do it.
condo associations?
Yeah, if they want to do it.
And just neighborhood.
Yeah.
Port Wade one.
One of the things that, that I found interesting was I have contacts in Tahoe area. And some of the issues there are whether people end up buying a house and then renting it to people who need to use that because they're workers. Or they go VRBO and rent it, or Airbnb or whatever, and do that. And it was interesting that, you know, Tahoe ends up having a reasonably long ski season, and then it has a reasonably long summer season. Now, there are a couple of months when you're not doing anything. But the interesting thing was that the economics was not necessarily favoring the Airbnb versus the year-long rental. And the reason that was true was that when you're doing the VRBO or the Airbnb, you have to provide all the services. You have to have that place plowed. You have to do all these kinds of things. And so therefore, the Tahoe area was not particularly worried about people buying up properties so they could think they're going to make money on-
No, it's a hassle.
Because they have, yeah.
So, anyway, that, that doesn't seem to be an issue around here, because the season is so short.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah, the other thing that-
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, the other thing that's been brought up, which I, I don't think is an issue here as much, though I know it exists, is that in places like Conway, and, which I know on your up there sometimes, Conway, Portsmouth, those two in particular, their problem is that they need workers. And, and not that we don't, but they really need a lot of affordable housing. And what's happening is that big developers are coming in and building apartment complexes purely to rent them out on Airbnb, where they should be being rented to workers that need to work in the community. We just don't have that same level of issue here. But it's something we should watch out for, because certainly, we, we have worker shortages, I mean, in town. That's a problem here. I mean-
Well, the difference up there is their people are, you know, they have limited capabilities to travel. So, they live in the area where the stores and stuff are located. Around here, you know, a lot of workers, contractors, cleaners, they can live in the next town over and not suffer. Because really, you've got to have a vehicle to get back and forth around here.
If we're getting a lot of complaints, I mean, that's concerning.
Maybe I should, maybe I should call them complaints. We're getting, we're hearing a lot of questions. I shouldn't call them complaints. We do, we've gotten one or two true complaints, but there are more questions about the town's policy. Do you have a regulation against it?
If they're questioning, and what's going on, that they're make their-
They're, they're, it's, it's nuisance issues, I think. It's nuisance issues.
If you look at it as a large percentage of the thousands, like you heard Mr. Rondo, we doubled our population. So, you have ten, twenty thousand people on a weekend, and what's the small percentage that squeaks a little bit? See what I'm saying? You've got-
And I hate to say that kind of agree with that, but yeah, I mean, we, we have so many people here. The fact that I only heard in total maybe ten or fifteen questions, that is kind of shocking to me still. That's a really low percentage. And a lot of, a lot of what I hear too is like, we observe that they have a lot of cars there. Okay, I mean, it might not even rise to the level of a nuisance complaint. It's like, they have a lot of cars. I think they're renting it. Okay, I mean, I'm sorry, but I mean, what, that's not a violation necessarily. What's the difference between that and a graduation party where you've got cars all up and down the streets?
Because it's, it's ongoing.
It's ongoing, right. But, but even so, I'm not sure that that's a, if it then is in a public way, then the police should be ticketing. If it's on the property in an, in an existing driveway, I'm not sure what the issue is there.
I know exactly what you're talking about. It is, is on the street. So, why aren't the police ticketing?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, they usually, if it's on the street, they'll usually go and they'll say, yeah, everybody needs to park on one side of the road so the fire vehicle can, can get through.
I'm actually not referring to one in specific, honestly, but I, I have heard several parking on the street complaints.
Yeah.
I get, I get that.
I know, is, again, it's no different than when you were growing up, and the guy down the road had parties every night, and there were cars coming down the road. And, and they were all lined up on the road, or, or the worker, for that matter, down on Soul Road. I mean, forty-five vehicles on the same house in the same location for ten years straight.
When there's no street parking, does that mean you can park on the street?
Well, the-
Other cars can get by?
No, I mean, no, if there's no street parking permitted, then it shouldn't-
But it would be designated, and there would be signs up, but, but we only have limited areas where that's-
Only a couple.
Down in the center of town here during the-
There are some streets that do have no street parking signs.
Right. Like going into Albee Beach.
Yeah, but I mean, some other streets, what, Libby, right? Libby has no parking.
Pleasant Street.
Okay, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't find it good to double park on High Street, or Park Street, or one of those streets, you know? Across the Masley, Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street would be, I mean, you can park on one side of the road there.
It's allowed?
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's-
Yeah, there used to be parking spaces there.
You can request a selectman.
They repaved it.
You can request that selectman issue a parking ban on-
Nope, I'm just wondering the way-
No, 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 I'm just, no, I'm just sort of, yeah, no, I, but that's an option.
Usually, again, usually if there, if somebody has a gathering or something, and everybody's parked on both sides of the road, somebody will come and say, please have your guests park on one side of the road. That's the end of operating procedure.
So, to, to wrap up, I guess, we're not dismissing the issue. We're definitely looking at it. That's my position, as I hope I summarized it well.
And we can turn them into duplexes.
And yeah, we can, we can go into duplexes next, because it's sort of related in some ways.
But this issue may come up again, because there are people, there are some people out in the community that are concerned about.
Trying to watch, see if there's a trend developing, probably.
And if a, if a group came in and said, we want, we want a committee to study the issue, okay. Plan board maybe wants to establish one. Okay, I'm good. I think that would be a great idea. If, if the board thinks, if the board thinks-
Do in the sign committee is-
Hey, do you guys want to sign up right away for that?
I, I thought of a lot about this. Again, when you see the duplex thing, and you think about the Airbnbs, and then you think of the resort community. This is a resort. People come, they, they stay, and, and they've, I mean, we really don't know. I mean, years ago, the horse and buggy, and they would stay in the carriage house. And it's like, I mean, it's, I hate to say it's grown to an Airbnb where there's six hundred houses in the town of Wolfboro for rent.
And just to be clear, to go back to the habitable space thing, the reason that I'm not promoting that, because it's also additional logic, our department doesn't know there's habitable space in there. It's additional septic loading. That's more of a safety issue than, than the Airbnb thing, which is-
Nuisance issue.
It's a nuisance issue. So, that's why I think the habitable space thing should be fixed, whereas Airbnb right now, I'm not, I'm not there yet. So-
And I would, I support that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so you want to talk about duplexes?
Yeah, this is even, my opinion is even less formed on this, so this shouldn't take that long. Maybe you all have different opinions. But Cory is concerned, based on a very small sample, like a couple of different conversion projects, that our duplex definition isn't clear enough about conversion of a single-family home. So, you can read what it says here. It basically says, building accessories thereto principally used, designed, or adapted with two dwelling units of similar proportions. That language is really critical, because we've started to wonder what it means by similar proportions. The most obvious example is on South Main Street. You leave town on the right-hand side. That was constructed just a few years ago, and I think it was a duplex before that. I don't remember the, six forty-five maybe sticks out in my head.
That Susan Johns place there?
No, right past the dent, right past the dentist's.
Yeah, past the-
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. On the right-hand side.
Susan Johns place.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the most obvious duplex example that I can think of.
Dermatologist.
That's exact, dermatologist, sorry, yeah. Yep. That's a clear duplex. What's a less-
It's an upstairs-downstairs.
Because there are two entrances that are symmetrical. And, and right, they're similarly configured inside, you know? It's not necessarily upstairs-downstairs. They could take the top off of that, and it would probably, it would still meet the definition. But they're the same unit kind of next to each other. I think you can also achieve it with an upstairs and downstairs. But the question becomes, if you've got a single-family home, let's say it's a ranch. It's a one-story ranch, but with a full finished basement, right? Is the intent of this to allow for a property owner to convert one story to one unit and the full basement, which is, let's say they're the same size right now, to a second unit in an existing residential neighborhood?
Okay, I'm going to raise my hand, because that's what I own. And I have one of those, a small level raised ranch. So, I'm in the position where, you know, I've paid over two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to point. And I, I had a bad renter, and they destroyed the house. So, at this point, there's limited rental going on. And the, the fact is that I look at it and say, you know, I could conform this to two.
Yep.
And two workers could live there. Two families could live there. So, what I say is, okay, if there's any chance that we limit the potential for a worker or a working family, then I'm not for it.
Okay.
Let's, if, if, yes, Airbnb comes to mind, but the potential for a worker or a rental, I mean, it's a-
Here, here's, can I say one, one thing, so I'm kind of clear? I'm happy to hear that. And I talked to Kathy about this today. I just want to understand if that's, if you're okay with that as you read this definition. Because that's, Cory is not saying that, unlike the habitable space thing, we don't necessarily see this as a problem and it needs to be fixed. Through a zoning change, we want to make sure though, that it's something that you, as the planning board, feel falls within the ordinance that exists today. And I guess-
Needs to be able to just, just distinguish though, between-
I think the ordinance as it exists covers what you're talking about. I think the ordinance as it exists today allows the, the conversion of a, a two-story ranch-style structure into two units. As long as they are of equal size above, you know, and with independent- and with independent entrances, you know, that sort of thing.
Didn't you say that that was one of the examples?
It's an example of, I'm not, I'm not sure, should it be allowed? That's where, you know, it's an existing single-family home.
But wasn't that one of the issues that Cory brought up?
Yep, 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 and we, we just had a, we, we had a, not a complaint, but on one of these, a, an abutter called and said, did they have to get approval to convert it to, to that? And no, I mean, it's a permitted use, as long as you meet the zoning standards, you can, you can do it, that's not an issue, so the, I just want to make sure you're comfortable with that, the planning board doesn't have to review it because it's not a multi-family use.
No, but there are, uh, you know, you, you technically need your own electric service, you need your individual services.
On the building code side, right, you're right, John, there, there are definitely requirements, yeah.
So, you, I mean, it's not like, you're not gonna be able to kind of wing it a little bit, you, if, if you do it legitimate, you're gonna have to follow the process that there is...
And you're gonna have to have the extra parking.
Yeah, that's correct.
You gotta have enough parking, yeah.
I'd rather see the example that you gave of the ranch house than, than the other example of the one down on South Main Street.
Okay, okay.
I don't know, I, I mean, it seems like it fit more in the character of a neighborhood, but maybe...
No, no, I think, I think that's fine, and we may not have any issues for years on this, or at all.
What comes to mind, and that's when I got thinking also, was like, okay, home occupation in a, in a ranch.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because...
The place on Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
It's a multi-family unit now.
Mm-hmm.
He's renting it out, two different families, cars are up and down the street parked, it, there's a parking issue, I don't know how they separate the utilities, but it's starting to be a little...
Okay, I'm not...
Is that the, was, is, so there was one there that they wanted to do a, uh...
Is this that same one?
The one, the, they wanted to do a, uh, ADU.
Has anyone filed, okay, we should talk about that offline.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on, but...
We haven't received a complaint.
But is it two family or a three family?
It's, um, house with an independent rental unit, it has its own kitchen, but there's not really enough parking to support two different groups living there, and there are...
Exactly the one we were supposed to...
Two different groups living there now.
And then they took it off the table at the last minute.
Yes, that is the one, and there are two different groups living there now.
Yeah, okay, well, that sounds...
My neighbor right in my face.
I questioned the word symmetrical, and the reason I say that is, I take that off the table, because I don't even know if I, I don't even know if I want... Anyway, but I, you know, I think that the similar proportions is, could be a little bit more explained, as in similar proportions with number of rooms and square area, or something like that, uh, but symmetrical ends up meaning that if you ended up having a different room structure downstairs and one different upstairs, it no longer is there, so...
Well, I was thinking of a, I was thinking of an A-point over one section and an A-point over the other section.
I also recognize that's kind of impractical, but I figured I'd go, go for it.
I called you on it and you were happy to get called on it.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, no, I'm, again, what, I, I think what I'm hearing is, let's not adjust what we're doing right now, and I'm hearing that you're comfortable with conversion.
Um, but we're now hearing there's a problem.
Well, that, that problem right, that problem right there, that problem isn't, that's a violation.
Well, not right there, but the problem that Susan brought.
Yeah, that, that problem though is not a problem.
It's not in this conversation.
It's a problem of a, of a violation, that's a totally...
But I, but I think that the similar proportions might be slightly better defined.
Proportions, yes.
Yep, no, I don't disagree with that.
And I, I just, you know, if, if Cory is saying, how do I deal with this?
Mm-hmm.
And if you can make, if you can make the, the similar proportions in area and number of bedrooms or whatever else you put in there.
So, I would argue, because I'm, I'm trying to limit now our zoning changes because we're talking a lot, I would argue if we can talk about that here, I'm not sure you really need to define it.
Duplexes are a certain style of a, I mean, they're limited style of a house there, and it's like, like the ones up...
On South Main Street.
Yeah, and, and then you get the ones that, you know, you have the two right next to each other, they both have the sliding door going out the back, and they were, they were ranch cut in half, basically.
Yeah, right.
I mean, the, other than that, what, what are the, what I was thinking about when you said symmetrical was a little tiny box room added on to a house, and that's not really, I mean, doesn't even fit, uh, fit the definition of a duplex at that point.
So, when you're talking about the proportions, you're really talking about area, bedroom count?
I think area, upstairs, downstairs, side by side, you know, similar proportions, I mean...
I think maybe it's, it's the questions, you're, you want to answer the questions that Cory gets.
Almost like a half and half.
And Cory can enforce it.
Yeah, I, I'm good, actually, if, if, if you are, all are comfortable with kind of the area, I, I know what you're saying.
I think it's like a fifty-fifty deal, basically, if you looked at a home, it's like if a, you can't call a duplex a seventy-five, twenty-five.
No, 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 definitely not.
You see what I'm saying?
We'd never have permitted that, but yeah, no, that's...
A duplex is a fifty-fifty style...
So, similar proportions probably is sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
But that, that's all I needed to hear.
Okay, but would...
Yeah, if you, if you really want to get tough, you could add the restriction of more, no more than a sixty, forty, uh, difference in, uh, that would be the only way I could think that you could get, you see what I'm saying?
We could, we could do that, the, the other thing I, I just want to note too, because you'll be wondering, but, uh, we have had some issues with septic loading related to this, so there, there has been one that we had to turn...
Well, that, that one also is, should be just on town sewer.
Not though.
No, they're allowed, duplexes are allowed in all of our zoning districts except...
Our residential, and John, I think that's okay, in the case I'm talking about, they, they basically had a two-bedroom septic, they wanted to do a duplex.
Yeah.
And it was gonna have, or maybe...
Okay, so they got caught, they got caught in the process.
Oh, yeah, we said no, I mean, it was just straight turned down.
So, so that's fine.
Oh, yeah, 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 so I think we can allow them where there is septic, as long as the septic meets the demand.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because anybody who does a duplex is gonna have to do a septic, I shouldn't, ready for that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not, I'm not too...
Yep, yeah, and, and, and again, if somebody does it right, they have to follow the process, there's a lot to it, and if you wing it, you're gonna get caught and it's gonna be a violation.
Yeah, really is one person in town buying a lot of properties, and this kind of knows the ropes of what we expect now.
Okay, so you're gonna follow up on...
If Cory, I mean, it's, you, you would know if Cory had something that was outlandish and you, uh...
We had one recently, this is last, two weeks ago, that wasn't really outlandish, but he just wanted to talk about it and make sure that we're not missing...
Yeah, little clarity.
Yeah, because he, he was just saying, this one was really, it was a, I think, I don't know if it was a ranch necessarily, but it was kind of split level where there was a lower level exit and upper...
Was it, so, so in a situation like that, how do you get onto it? Do you get turned on by a complaint or question or a, or a building improvement?
This person wanted to buy the property?
Oh, okay.
And convert it, that's what they're doing.
Okay, research.
Yeah, and he wanted to buy it, and he wanted to know whether it was allowed there.
Hmm.
But...
Okay.
Maybe bring some more Cory.
Mm-hmm, that's good. That'll be, be good.
He's a little bit out there, he's the one that's reviewing a lot of these permits, so...
Back him up.
Okay.
Next three super fast. Think, well, maybe not the next three.
Well, right, yeah.
Um, CIP meeting schedule, hopefully that you received this, it's just informational, this is the very tentative schedule, we're quite a ways out from this, but we're trying to set some of the, we're not too far out, actually, we're trying to set some of the meeting dates for the process, so as you can see, we've got a pretty aggressive schedule there, um, be busy, and we probably won't meet all of these in deadlines, but we'll do our best.
Okay.
Just informational only, any questions on that?
Nope.
We're meeting Abenaki Lodge a lot, obviously, available meeting space.
Okay, well, it's very handy for Mike and I.
It is very handy, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, good. Um, on, uh, master plan, yes, public infrastructure has, I would say, two to three meetings left, um, hopefully on the two side, we have a meeting tomorrow, Thursday evening. I'd like to test the waters on a public hearing date for the master plan, August the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, and potentially set that this evening, subject to any objections in the next week maybe, um, and at that meeting, we would hear all of the chapters and the master plan in its entirety, pretty big...
On the twentieth?
The twentieth or twenty-seventh, whichever is best. Twentieth is a regular meeting night, twenty-seventh is the, the following Tuesday. Wanted to see if you have any preference on that?
I'm more than likely gonna be away on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I think I am too.
In July?
Uh, August, August, no.
Are you, you gonna be around, Peter?
My schedule is around the regular meeting, so I, the twenty-seventh would be the one.
Okay, so the regular...
He's hovering around it.
I figured that was...
Yeah, okay, all right.
Are you good for the twi-
Yeah, I'll be good for the twentieth.
I will be returning on the twentieth, so it's, yeah, it's very possible I could attend.
I would essentially dedicate the work session to...
So, what do you call that event?
That would be the master plan public hearings.
Okay.
Dedicate our work session in August.
Okay, and we're gonna have the, the whole document.
Yep, whole document.
Okay.
Are you good with that, Kathy, the twentieth?
Yeah, yes, don't, that's what we've talked about, and everyone seems to be...
Anyone's good with that?
On.
I like the, I like the deadline.
Yeah.
Well, today, I do.
Okay, okay, and then July sixteenth?
July sixteenth, next week, Tuesday, if you want to have a meeting, I can get materials together, I think we traditionally skip this second meeting in July.
Is it okay with people if we skip the meeting?
Oh...
(laughing).
What about the...
Sorry, Brad.
Okay, so, what about the crosswalk thing? That was the night after the...
I was gonna mention the, uh...
Yeah, well, that's still, that's still on.
That's still on, so remember we had talked about a, uh, complimentary discussion there, you mentioned something about that, you would call that a meeting or something?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, John, sorry.
You were gonna call, but...
Oh, no, no, what I was, what I was gonna do is notice the meeting if a lot of people were gonna be at that session, so just a reminder, July seventeenth, Wednesday, there's the HDOT informational session on rumble and mumble, rumble and mumble strips and also crosswalks.
Yeah, the crosswalk at the, at the...
Right, Michigan.
The falls will be up here, um, I'm not gonna notice the meeting unless...
It's at six-thirty, so, yeah, okay, yeah, I don't have a problem, let's skip on the sixteen.
You're here, you just can't talk to each other about anything.
Okay.
So, um...
Well, several of us were at the sidewalk meeting.
So, I, I, I don't...
It was in the paper.
Yeah, oh, yes, right.
I, I would say that you don't need the meetings.
Mm-hmm, okay, fine, good.
Now, when, when are we gonna do the architectural standards? Did we set a date for that?
I honestly, and...
And the sign thing.
Yeah, and the sign.
The only thing for the architectural standards is whether or not we're proceeding with that draft, as I said.
I believe we are.
Are we good with that?
Well, that was the Maggie's revisioned wording.
I just wanted to make sure everyone...
Okay, but you sent it to the committee and not...
I did, I just want affirmation, so I just, I heard, so I've heard from you two, I just want to check with Vaughn that she's good.
Yeah.
After that, we're supposed to bring it back here and then set the public hearing.
Public meeting?
Or comment or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and the way finding signs...
Okay, so, well, uh, on architectural standards, we'll probably have it for the August first meeting, or whatever date that is, okay, all right, so that'll be good, then we can schedule it.
We could maybe do signs at the same time?
Well, that, yeah, and then the signs.
So, signs, Laura was out for two weeks on vacation, I meant to get back with her, I was just gonna get back with her about that question about the, with the question about, remember that she said it wasn't clear about whether it was board of selectmen or planning board, and I was just gonna clarify with her, I don't believe we need another meeting, I just need to keep you in a meeting. The recollection of the conversation?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have my notes, you can leave me those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that, that...
We were gonna agree with her opinion, basically.
I thought we were gonna put it on...
I want to get my notes, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna make them.
Okay. Okay, I thought we were sort of, I mean, we're talking about putting the whole thing in the zoning ordinance, right?
That's how I thought we were proceeding.
Yeah.
But there was still a question about the public...
I, I thought she kind of answered that.
She answered it, and then Roger had his own, uh, clarification on the wording, and then I kind of, uh, and we...
Okay, that's right, yeah.
We were on, we, we only reworded, it was the, it was about the non-conforming...
Oh, yes, and we forgot, I'm sorry, and it's, it was, we had the signs in existence...
Oh, that's right.
Signs is, yes.
And Roger was very passionate about the fact that we need to add in, signs in existence of, as of April first, twenty nineteen, not requirement.
That's right, that, he added a little, little sentence in there.
That was it, but I still wanted to, I think, grow up on my, but her, her response was...
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, her, her letter was vague, and then it was, it was basically, it wasn't contrary to what we were doing, so that's how Roger construed it in the positive, it wasn't, she didn't shut it down, say, no, you can't do this, she basically...
Yeah, and she didn't seem to have a problem with it being in the zoning ordinance.
No.
That was sort of what I think...
That seems odd to me, I, I, I just read her opinion, so I, I don't, I think maybe...
Okay, but maybe, we'll have that on the first August meeting.
I think that's what I was, I think that's...
And then we can decide what to do.
And, and, and for me, the biggest problem of this whole thing is, when we do all this work, somebody can go get a variance, and that's the part that bothers me the most, I don't like that concept at all, because, again, we've done all the work to find all the right parts of the situation, and then somebody can just go grab something out of the space and...
Yeah. Yeah.
So where else would it go?
If you can't prevent against, well... That is a question. Put it in the selectmen's... ...perception. Even so, though, I think part of it, if you put it in the selectmen's ordinance, it might... ...have a portion.
Right.
I don't, I don't think there's any way...
So, but, but the, but the authority is the selectmen's area?
Public right of way, yes, but the problem is that even if we allow it in the public right of way in the locations we pick, someone wouldn't be able to put it in different locations in the public right of way, but what they could do, they could request a variance to put a sign on private property.
Yes.
Do you see what I'm saying? So they, they couldn't, if we put in the selectmen's ordinance for the public...
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we searched out specifically, to say, "Okay, this is gonna be, six inches from the sidewalk, because this is where the town property is. We don't want it three feet over, because it's..."
So here's the news, though, or maybe it's not. If we don't put anything in the town ordinance, the ordinance, we still have the right to just...
Yes, yeah.
Problem is, though, we still, there's no way for us to remove the ability of private property. We're gonna go away. I know it's, I, it just, it's...
But, and that's what we, that's what we steered the whole committee around and, and didn't want.
No, I, I know, and I think we should heavily discourage it, but there's no way to totally prevent, no way to totally prevent somebody from getting a new power plant. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, take a radical example. We, we... Our best weapon is educating the Z B A about how much went into this effort.
Okay, and, and I'm, and I'm okay with that, too, so if, if the sign committee doesn't think that's a good idea, and you know what's going to the Z B A for a variance, I mean, prudence would say that, obviously, if the members don't think it's a good idea, they should go to the committee meeting and voice their concerns and help give clarity on the, on the matter.
And we can do that, I mean, we can do that.
Absolutely, you can.
Again...
Absolutely, yep, if, if...
Really hard, though, to even put something like that through to get a variance. You gotta meet the five criteria there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It'd be difficult.
Okay, yes.
I...
In my mind, anyway.
Okay, so...
Board is tougher, too, on signs than anything else.
Who?
Picked up on that.
Yeah, the board is tougher on signs than anything else.
Okay, all right.
In my, in my limited experience with it.
I just, again, I just had to flush that out.
It's, it's, it's a good question.
I was wondering that, I was like, well, there's, there's no other avenue for it, so what are you gonna do?
Yeah.
Stay the course.
Also, the thought that we were gonna try to make sure it was worn properly, or whatever, so that people wouldn't be able to say between now and when it gets passed, and...
Yeah, so we did...
That was that sentence that Roger just, that he just read from Rogers.
Uh, no, no, this was Roger saying that Roger wanted the, the planning board to potentially schedule the public hearing for the amendment, so that the ordinance would functionally be in place.
Correct.
That's right.
Let me get back to you on that whole matter, just because I, I don't know if that's really the right...
Yeah.
I need to think about whether that's the right approach.
I thought the way that we had discussed it was, we wanted to hear public comment first before it went into jurisdiction.
That may be, that may, yeah, John, I think you might be right.
And also, we put a date in there, it was April.
Yeah, but technically between now and, I, I know, but it, I think, I think it's right to get public comment.
But, but again, we, we hadn't sent a letter to the selectmen to let them know how we had resolved the issue, okay? So we hadn't got that in the process, so we, I mean, we didn't really have the grounds to go and say, "We're gonna do this", because we haven't really even got confirmation from them.
I agree, I agree.
No, no, right.
So it's really moot to be talking about it, because we...
Pretty premature, I think, yeah, I think...
Well, we still need to bring it back to the planning board for...
That's right.
Yeah, and then the...
Selectmen, yeah.
Okay, all right, so do you think we'll be able to put that one on the...
I think so, yeah.
So, so at that time, we'll be ready to draft a letter for the selectmen, or do something to...
I don't see any reason why not.
Right.
Yeah, I think we definitely can, do a presentation to them.
Okay, and that first meeting in August, we're gonna have a farm stand? It's...
Uh, maybe, maybe.
Oh, okay.
Maybe.
We're having a, a special...
You have a special use permit with a site walk?
The site walk.
Which will either be at 6 o'clock or 6:30, you'll find out soon.
What night's that?
Uh, the first August meeting in, I don't know the...
Six, well...
It's in 6:30.
It's, uh, yeah, Tuesday, the 6th.
It's gonna be a site walk of the site before the, just so the planning board members can see it, and... For the, a special use permit in August, so a wetlands permit in August.
All, yeah, all special use, now, we're gonna go look at the place and...
We're gonna go for a site walk.
And where is this?
It's gonna be on North, uh, South Canyon Shore, North Canyon Shore, Torquay Mesner's.
Any shore, just, any shores.
Okay, anything else coming in August?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We have a couple projects out there, as you know, that are just, they're bigger projects, but I don't know when they're coming in.
Oh, I, I know, well, Jim said that probably Brewster is gonna...
September.
It's not coming in...
September, I think.
September.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there are a couple bigger projects out there. Oh, nope, we have a few little things that may come up, but I... I, yeah, you're gonna get, maybe it's one or two cases for the next month or two.
And, um, Vaughn or someone had brought up at our last meeting about the change in design of the Goodyear and Hawkins.
Yes, and I contacted them, I heard back from them, and they never followed up with me. Thank you for reminding me, I'll contact them right now.
Yeah, because the fire is out in California, the price of seed, there weren't...
Nope, I'll get in touch with them right now.
They have to change their interior look.
Okay, so pending, we don't know of anything else, other than what we just mentioned thus far, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, can we look at the minutes, June 4th?
Are we, are we on new business still, or...
I'm sorry, no, yeah, sorry about that, I...
I just had, I was thinking about something relative to some cement that I saw in some water, and how it was turning it all green, and I got thinking, again, about the boathouses in the lake, and the bleeding of the concrete in the lake, and I, it was like, I'm, I, I... In my mind, I didn't want them because of the concrete, but is there another way that they can be designed with steel, the concrete down underneath the ground, so it doesn't melt away?
I honestly don't know.
Do you see what I'm saying? I'm trying to wrestle with that one.
Well, it's a D E S issue, and I guess...
No...
No, it isn't, it's in our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could be more restrictive, I mean, so...
Materials used?
Well, I think that concrete is the predominant material that's used, there's no question about that.
You're asking, are there alternatives?
I, I don't...
I am, I, I, alternatives to concrete, because the concrete, again, I mean, it bleeds away, and the...
Simple question, are there alternatives?
Are there alternatives, yes.
I can ask somebody.
I mean, it goes to the designer, these guys, they design this thing, they go to you and say, "I wanna build this", and then the way I was thinking about it, I was like, if they come to you and they say, "We wanna build the boathouses", and then now you say, "Well, you're limited to this more environmentally friendly style".
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
That's all I'm trying to do.
Well, if you ended up putting in a concrete footing, and then you had granite block up from that, that would end up being a better alternative.
Is that something we can do? Who, who, who does?
That's right, yeah.
Restricting it?
If there is some altern, we could certainly find out if there are alternatives.
I can find out if there are alternatives, but the question is, once you find out that there are alternatives, are you talking about a restriction that says you have to use this specific alternative?
Exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, yeah, yeah, I'm saying, yeah, if you want a boathouse, you, well, I'm saying, I'm not gonna approve concrete walls.
I think you can do that through your special use permit, honestly.
Okay, well, but, but again, they've come...
I think so.
But the problem is, they come to you, Matt, and so why, by the time they make it to the meeting, am I gonna stand up and say, "I'm not gonna support your application, because it's concrete"?
Yeah, no, I agree, I...
Well...
We need to have a discussion about it, and then...
I can answer that question technically, and it's gonna be a bad answer, but I don't have the authority to tell them. I can prepare them for that question to come up and say, "Look, they're not gonna like that".
Okay.
That's what I can do.
Sure, that's what...
And I can definitely do that.
Yeah.
And present it with alternatives.
Yeah, no, I can definitely do that, the only, the only thing that gets a little tricky is if you want it, right, I, I just can't tell them no, but if you wanted to create a restriction, which is a whole other step, you could potentially do that, but let me find out, um, for alternatives, what's...
We talked about it after that one last boathouse thing there, 'cause again, I mean, it's, yeah, there's not many of them that go in, but...
Do you know of any, Brad? I, I, I guess in some ways, I, I think of, well, you can't put any in Lake Monterey.
Yeah.
Right.
Have to, have to, have his farm, guys.
Total amount of shoreline that Wolfboro has compared to the shoreline of one of the Stucky is, you know, a drop in the bucket, therefore, is it worth something, is it really worth worrying about? It may be, I don't know, and it may be that we would start a trend in having other places along with this, but it's...
I'm just trying to propagate the discussion for that thought, maybe, yeah.
And it may be that if Wolfboro ended up making that regulation, other places would do the same.
And, and that's what I was thinking about, I was thinking about, okay, in one lake, we've got nothing, zero tolerance. In this lake, we've got complete tolerance, so maybe in this lake, we could give tolerance, but not the farm.
One thing you wanna do, you wanna be careful, or get our research done first, to find out what, if anything, is leaching out from the concrete into the water. Concrete is made up of sand, cement, and water, stone, none of which are hazardous materials at all. So I don't know how we would be able to even justify telling people that they can't use it as a building product, um, and something like that, so...
What if the states looked at that at all? Sure, they, they must.
Little thing going on right now in Osiphe, you know where Green Mountain Furniture is up there?
Yeah.
Just north of that, on the same side of the road, um...
Holman cut that off.
Cut that lot, they own the lot there, and they're gonna build it out, basically, for a construction site, 'cause they got all the projects out on Route 16 to do, and they brought up some of their old waste concrete up there to put in there as fill, well, the town gave a cease and desist order on that, claiming that they're contaminating the ground and all this stuff. D E S said they want absolutely nothing to do with that, staying, they're completely staying out of it. So Osiphe went and hired an engineering firm to come in and do some testing on it, and my conversation with our code officer up there was, what, I asked him, "What do you think is in concrete that's bad anyways"? Says, "When you build foundations, if you put them in the ground, putting waste concrete on the ground, it's, you know, aye aye, there's no difference there." And at Monday night's meeting, last night's meeting up there, selectmen made a comment that they got some results back from the engineers, and they were keeping that all private, they weren't gonna publicize it.
Oh, thanks.
Well, that kinda tells me that they didn't get, like, the results they got, is, that's what it's telling me, anyway, I'll...
Are there, are any...
What is that telling you?
That they didn't like the results they got, basically saying, like, let's find out if there was nothing wrong.
Nothing wrong?
That's what my, that's my, my feeling is, I don't know, in fact, it'll come out eventually, but I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, please do, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, can you, I mean, is there anything that you can think of that might be in there, as like an...
Well, not, well, again, I, I kinda, I agree with Brad, when it's crushed up and it's on the ground, it's when the water is soluble all around it, do you see what I'm saying? I mean, again, I go down to Lake Monterey and go down to the girls' camp down there, uh, Bernadette, and they got a concrete thing out there, a hunk, and, I mean, the, the sides are eaten off by like two inches, and like Brad says, okay, what's in it that causes the problem? I mean, if, if there's nothing there, the...
It's, it's the lime that, that disintegrates, associated with a little bit of acid in the water.
Yeah.
And so it disintegrates, and when it disintegrates, it's holding the other stuff together, and then the pebbles fall into the water, and it's, and the lime is not bad. If it was a phosphate or something like that, you worry about it, but that's not what you're talking about.
It's probably such a slow process, stuff you try talking about down there, it might already be fifty, sixty years old, something, too, or older, or older, yeah.
Okay.
All the other chemical they put in it in the winter time, if they do a winter pause, is calcium, um, the curing process.
That's what lime is.
Yeah.
Well, there's li, there's li, no?
No.
I'm still gonna ask, I'm still curious.
I mean, basically, what John is saying, I think, is that, are there alternatives?
Are there alternatives, or is it something you worry about?
I'll find out.
Yes, yes, that is, that is exactly what Peter's, Peter's on, is... Should we, should we be doing something different, or are we staying this course?
Okay, I can find that out.
Okay.
Um, new business, so does that mean I can ask a random question?
Yeah.
Yep.
Does anyone know what's going on with the Christian Science building that's been sitting vacant? For sale? For a while now?
It's for sale, I do know that, I haven't heard anything on it, we haven't had conversations with them for two years about anything.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on.
You can start a business.
I know there are structural issues.
Yeah, it's, it's really too bad.
Yeah.
Because there are structural issues?
No, no, it's just too bad that it's sitting vacant.
Well, the whole, the whole, the whole...
It'd be so sweet.
The diner's closed, I mean, I was, they, they couldn't get help.
Oh, is that why they're closed?
Yeah, they can't get help.
Can't help?
Yeah, the guy, the guy that owns the place is going in there cleaning dishes and cooking, and when everybody's, nobody's showing up.
Really?
It's a, yeah, it's a problem.
No, that's why they were closed?
Yeah.
Well, we just need more cool little businesses to... Town's doing great, though, I heard from Aaron Morrissey, July 5th, his son works at the porch. He said, "Last year on July 5th, they did 130 meals throughout the day. This year on July 5th, they did 160 breakfasts."
Oh, jeez.
That's what he said.
Are you kidding me?
That's what he said.
That's a little bit from right, but I believe it, wow, oh my god.
I believe it, too, that's trying to get through town, I'm afraid.
Really did...
What did everybody think about the parking during the parade?
I haven't heard any feedback yet.
Any negative?
Didn't go to the parade.
Why, was it different?
We banned parking downtown.
Banned parking downtown?
I don't think it was different, but I don't know, I've only, I've only been a couple times, so I don't, I don't know.
Some of the pictures I saw looked like there were a few cars parked there.
Their community TV was set up, so they had a bunch of, a bunch of us set up there, but there was only one car, I think, that had to be...
So this is what I got thinking about.
Yeah.
Okay, if somebody comes down and they're sitting in a car, the, the chances of them being, getting out and going into a business is less than people standing around.
I agree.
That was my...
Yeah.
I think that was a common issue.
People were just wandering around in all the stores, waiting.
Seven Sons Line was...
That was my conclusion on that one.
During the parade.
Yes, doing that no parking area down there, yeah.
And the parking lots were, well, maybe I shouldn't, parking lots were empty along the sides. People, like dockside was empty, no one had parked there.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So I think we need to improve the signage in the future, but it was, I thought it was a success, I mean...
Oh, it was a huge success.
I think it looked nice, I saw lots of people taking pictures that had known that it was kind of a controversial decision, and they were saying, "I just wanna document it, so that we have some photo evidence of it", so I think it went well, I mean...
It went great.
Yeah.
It was great.
And people, people played by the rules, which is always good, too, I mean, people adhered to it, they didn't park in the parking spaces, those who did moved their cars quickly, it was really, I thought it was pretty darn good, so...
We could get any feedback tomorrow night, be our first meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
When it comes in, in public.
Meeting, is that?
Second.
Oh, right.
Do you have another, another issue?
Uh... No, I mean, I just have a couple of questions about locations in town, what's happening with them.
Oh, okay, well, go ahead, Nan.
This is the venue, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, sure.
Okay, um, so on Lainer Street, the house that is the second one in...
Yeah.
The one on the corner, the one that's the second one in, is quite a concern, it's a total eyesore. The rest of Lainer Street doing okay, you see improvements being made. That one is very visible, and it's, it's so sketchy looking. I'm so happy with what I see going down Center Street, it was lovely. But as soon as you turn that corner, that thing is just an abomination.
Yep, it's, it's...
I don't, I'm...
It's the antique.
It needs a match.
Don't say that out loud.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Who owns it, and what is the status there, can I ask?
I, I may not know, I mean, I can tell you who owns it, but I, I, uh, let's see here.
What, is there a, is there a specific violation, or something, building, or something, or it's just...
Probably rodent...
Yeah, there's no, there's no specific.
Yeah.
Do you think there are residents there, are there residents living in that place?
I need to look.
I have a question, I have a question about the house down here on the corner that has the bookstore.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, uh, yeah, yeah.
On the corner of the-
I think I know that one.
Yeah, next to the theater there with, if a, that's a-
Are we talking a different street?
Is this the one you're talking, so, so, yeah.
Yes, that one.
This is the one, this is the one, sorry, I was-
That's a lovely picture of it, it doesn't look nearly that good.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't raise my attention.
You're not afraid of that place? I don't think there's anybody living in it.
I, I'm-
I don't know for sure.
I, I feel bad for the nearby property owners, because some of them have been substantial amounts fixing up there.
Yep.
Yeah, well, Melanson's, Melanson's fixed the third one in and then sold it, so they couldn't be too disappointed, but as a neighbor-
So whose responsibility is it, how can we all work together to improve, you know, isolated situations that affect others?
Well, you had those buildings down there on Lainer Street that sat dilapidated for years, I mean, they were-
No.
We don't have a, we don't have a-
Well, finally, the town did step in, and-
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
The town did step in?
Yeah.
And purchased them and-
Purchased in twenty years.
Yep.
Yep.
And demolished them.
We, we don't have a property maintenance code, some places do.
So is it possible for the town to approach the owner of that place and strike a deal?
Oh, there's no reason.
I've gotta be careful answering that, I mean, I would... The town could purchase a property owner like this, but, um-
Do we know who the owner is?
We do, yeah. Alton Rollinsford LLC. No idea.
Is it a Wolfboro, Wolfboro address?
Nope. It's, so it, it is possible, it's just, it, it's somewhat challenging when there's not a, an imminent issue.
Oh, and, and there's, and there is, uh, an example on the books, we had a property out off of, across from Christie's, Seven Eleven, next to Robbie's AV camp out there, and there was a property that was in shambles, and we went and we cleaned it all up, and we spent fifty-two thousand dollars, and now-
The town did?
Yes, and now there's a tax lien of fifty-two thousand dollars, we sent the guy to jail that owned the property, and he died. And his wife now owns the property with a tax lien of fifty-two thousand dollars on it, and she raises her grandchildren, and they have a, a daughter who, a daughter-in-law in a wheelchair. It does not.
They took out a lot of stuff, and it still looks like it.
They still went out a lot of stuff.
So, 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 that's the extreme.
Yeah.
And you're seeing the infancy of the, of something that could metastasize into something like that. And, and the example that I see is, that isn't what the town wants to-
We, we do have cases where there are really dilapidated structures, um, there's one on Pine Hill Road that somebody might be aware of, that the town orders to be demolished. It's like a, it's a public health and safety hazard.
Really?
Just said that one, this, this couple of months.
On Pine Hill Road?
And, and which department?
Yeah. We're talking to the property owner, it's not like we go in there and demolish the, the property, but I mean-
Oh, yeah, no, I-
But, yeah, I mean, there's some that rise to a certain level that are, people are, we, people are going in there, you know, there's, there's-
Okay, the, the, the one, the one across the street from Highland Terrace, the tan colored one.
The one I'm talking to?
Yeah.
The one that's got the-
Not even close.
You know which one, across the street from Highland Terrace, the gray one right on the corner.
Yes, they, there's been a U-Haul truck taking stuff out of there.
That tan one right there? That one that's got the split, the, the one up on North Main Street there?
No, they just cut the grass?
Yeah, once a year, yeah, and he's got the-
Yeah, they did it for the Fourth of July. But, yeah, that's an, that's another-
Yeah, it's the one right before Ambrose Way on the right-hand side.
Yeah, that's another good, go with them falling in?
Yes, same, I mean-
Wow.
Family, they come up, they, they cut it?
But at least that's a little bit on the outskirts, it's not right in, you know, the center of town like this place, it's very visible.
Okay, but what's, uh, consistency and what's, uh, we can't, we can't say one and not the other, I, I mean-
Priorities, it's subjective.
It, it, yes, and that's where we get caught in the bind, because we look like we're, we're, uh, being punitive to one and not on the other.
It's just an excess.
I agree.
Invisibility.
Yep.
Obvious visibility.
It was a house out Pleasant Valley Road where it was rented to this family or group, and, and, like, we gotta get these people out of here, and they wouldn't get out of there, and by the time they finally were out of there, the house was so dilapidated, the guy raised it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, can we find out if it is inhabited?
It's not.
Not, I mean, not, not easily.
Really?
No.
Whether they have your bills, health, they'd be unusual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can check on that.
It'll be one-way.
Yeah.
Trust.
Just contact the owner, who has, who has the ability to just contact the owner, nice suggestion to, you know-
Well, we don't have, we don't have any ordinances.
No, as a, as a citizen, you, I mean, you can write a letter to, you go to, down to the town offices, and you look at the tax card, and you see the address, and you write to that address, and, and, uh-
You go online, and you can find it without having to go to Town Hall.
Yeah, and, and-
I mean, some towns do have ordinances.
They do.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
They were, as a matter of fact, one of my first jobs in municipal government was, I was in charge of substandard housing in South Bend, Indiana.
Oh, boy.
That's, that's not-
But it was, it was all done to, um, um, improve the neighborhoods for people living there.
Evitalization.
That was the purpose, uh-
Yeah, I, I don't know, put that here and there, you know?
But those were specific ordinances, and-
But you know what happens when, when you have two other houses that are the worst houses, and then those houses get taken down, and they're not the worst houses, they're not the most eyesore, and then it goes to the next one down, and that's, that's what, and that's what-
Yeah, but the bar is being raised.
But sometimes it does encourage people.
It does.
And the overall level is being raised.
Yep, so, so if you wrote somebody, what would you, what would you say to them? What would you suggest to say to them?
Oh, I would, I-
No, but I'm just, just curious to, uh, try to understand what, yeah. Well, I'm just saying, 'cause if you were to ask somebody else to write a letter, like, potentially suggesting, I'm just trying to think of what they would have put in the letter.
Yeah, it's tough.
You see what I'm saying?
Really tough, tough thing to reach out on here.
Right.
We actually had to sort of do one of these recently where there was a building permit involved, so we had an, you know, a, a reason to contact, and like anything, terrible situation, someone going through a really tough time, financial means are not there, we try to work on it as much as possible to clean it up a little bit, but we, there's the letter approach, and then that we always have to have the human side after that, because we just can't-
No, the human side is much better.
Yeah, and we, we, unfortunately, we often are stuck doing the letter first, because all we have is an address, but we've just got to, we, we then invite them in to talk to us, so they, they don't feel like it's the town and them, right? It's like, look, you know that you've got stuff going on, we would, we know your property, it could really be improved, what can we do to help? You know, is there anything that, not financial, but, yeah, no, but what we have to do, I mean, we have to do this quite a bit, so anyway.
You don't have the authority to do it.